Start with the pledge of allegiance. Let's start with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have a quorum. We won't officially call the meeting to order because we have to have quorum to do that. But we can continue and discuss some things that don't require voting as such. There's reports. So with that being said, Heather, would you like to step up and give us a report on the area of planning commission? You're going to give us the annual review. Is that what this is?
Yes, I have the end of the year report for 2021.
You want to step up here so that the TV camera can pick you up?
No, no. That's why I'm in the corner. Actually, I have a couple other things. All right, so in 2021, the office was fairly busy. We did 941 total permits, collected $101,458.89, up from $62,520.20. Rochester Township took in a total of 497 permits. 327 of those were in the city of Rochester. So pretty busy here.
Yeah.
So that's the end of the year report. Any questions on that? Took me three months to get it to you, but here I am. I do have, I'll be bringing, talking to Andy about it. I haven't yet. I've been out and busy. Probably dressed to see my emails. The city council in 2015 affirmed condemnation on the ice house. And I talked to you about this a while back. I'll be bringing that in front of you again to see what we can get done about this. 311 Colton, we talked about that the other day. Sent that over to Andy, so it's in his hands now.
Hey, well, if I could interrupt you.
Sure.
Where is that, Andy? Where does that one, particularly, is it?
Because it's going to become a lien, I want to get a title search on that name. All mortgage companies are lien holders as parties. Well, I thought, I'm waiting on title search. I heard yesterday.
Okay. Thank you.
And the other one we discussed.
Bellwood Acres?
Bellwood Acres. Did you go out there?
I did. No, it's in the county.
Okay, it has two campers and a pickup truck, and that's it. So I'm not sure what the complaint was about, but that was all they had. It wasn't terrible.
I wonder if we had the right house.
That's why I was wondering. I was going to email you and then.
Is there one on the other side? Okay, you said right next door, Julie.
Yeah, they went right next door, and there was two campers and a pickup truck. I mean, I can send something for the camper because it should sit on the side of the house. But I mean, really, it wasn't terrible.
Well, don't like he felt like this was a second jet yard coming down the trail.
Yeah, I mean, the one camper was a little beat up, but nothing too terrible.
Okay.
So we did look at that. And then other than that, I mean, we're just looking for the motel today again, so.
Yeah.
Their list is actually getting smaller of what needs to be done. So they are working on things that they're supposed to. It's not quite up to par from what the public wants, but they're working on it.
Yeah. Boy, we have enough of these to deal with. We can't have any more, can we?
Sure.
I know you need something to do, but you'd rather do other things. But I appreciate you taking a look at that one property. And sometimes people approach you and they have an opinion of what we can do and
Yeah.
really don't understand.
I was going to email you, and like I said, and then I had to be at the motel this afternoon just to make sure we had the right property. But Skip didn't notice anything else out there that stood out, that maybe he did have the wrong one. But the one camper did have a tarp on top of it and a boarded up window, so I don't know.
Was there any other house close by?
Not that he's seen, so.
Okay, okay. I know it's probably the right one.
Yeah. But I, so we can't send a letter because RVs are supposed to sit on the side of the house. And this one sits in the front, but that's really all I can send a letter for.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you for that.
Any questions?
Okay, I did, as I mentioned before, we went on camera. I did pass out a picture of each one of you guys. This is the.
Carol, you were recording. Since this is not really a meeting.
Well, you didn't push. No, you don't have to if it's not a meeting, right?
Don't have to if it's not a meeting. You don't have to.
Don't have to if it's not a meeting.
Does Charlotte like listening to him?
Oh, absolutely. She does. Push the button. She'll check it out on TV. What she wants, what she doesn't want to hear is that we're blaming the fact we don't have a quorum on her. She's not here today. Everybody's on the spring break apparently. The picture that I passed out is of the school new lift station that we completed back in October to satisfy the requirements of the jail. And what I realized was, you know, this picture hangs on the wall of pride in there, but I had not shown it to any of you folks. I thought you might like to see it. It turned out really, really well out there. The Bancroft Construction folks, TGB of Mishwaka, they did this. They're the ones that I think I mentioned to you are 75% of their workforce is former veterans. And they just, they knock it out of part. They do a great job. The other thing I left for you to take home and peruse at your leisure that we would like to get on the agenda and take care of at the next meeting is a memorandum of understanding and a resolution that Attorney Perkins put together for us to cover the Minno Creek project. As we stated before, we are taking on the reconstruction, cleaning, maintaining of Minno Creek within the city limits. We've had quite a bit of discussion back and forth with the county. Started with some documentation that the surveyor resurrected from 1947. Andy, Perkins?
Some of it earlier than that, yeah.
That, well, basically said that agreements were made that the city would take care of that. Then that was negated in 1964 by the state. Counties couldn't.
Essentially, yeah.
Yeah. You had to, had to do a little more of a formal situation to relinquish that responsibility from the county to a municipality, correct? Is that a fair statement?
Well, the statute put all regulated drains under, or under the drainage board.
Under the drainage board, yeah.
And there was nothing, and included those graded by courts going back in the 20s and 30s and so.
And per the, per the surveyor, what your ditch assessments that you see on your property tax, that's predominantly for Minno, or for Mill Creek. Minno Creek doesn't get any of that. So we decided, okay, the prudent thing to do here is to jump in and grab hold of this while we were establishing the particulars and the process for the stormwater utility, which you'll be hearing more about as we move forward, and include this as part of moving that forward. Dwayne Border has taken the responsibility, kind of put his arm around that project. We've had an excavator company come out and clean it out as best they could from down there at the gas station on the south end of town, all the way through Riddle School and such, and all the way out. And I had a resident text me just yesterday saying, whatever you guys did, you keep doing it because it's flowing wonderfully and staying out of their yards. And that's what we've seen, going up into yards. We've had an engineering study done, and the piping and such, for layman's terms, is needing to be enlarged. It's pretty, and some of it's damaged and such, so we'll, we'll be tackling that. We're working with Okra, rural community affairs folks. They have a process to apply for grant monies. We can get up to $660,000-some thousand if we're successful. And we have a grant company that we were working with, that has been working with us since the waste treatment plant project, that will help us wrap our arms around that because this, you know, creek project's over a million dollar project to get it where it needs to be. We've put it together. If you went and looked in the project room in there on the whiteboard, you'll see that this project is broken down into four phases. So it will be a four-year process to complete it. It's not a small job, but it's, it's one that's necessary. So this will be under that tent as well. So that's, that's why you kind of had that picture. And also this memorandum of understanding and resolution, which if it looks okay to you guys, it looks good to me, we'll act on it at the next meeting and then present it to the county for them to act on it as well, basically handing it over to us. And then it won't be on a cocktail napkin from 1934 or someplace, right? It's amazing what some of these things get recorded on. It is, right, kind of humorous. So we're going to, we're going to have it scripted and done right. Okay.
Question for you, Mayor.
Sure.
Would a memorandum like this also work for the Fulton County Transport, the garage? Could that be done?
We're still looking at that. We're still, still kind of rolling that around. That, that could be a little different. And then here I'm wandering into the legalese area.
That has an existing lease, doesn't it?
It does, and it also was the product of a federal grant that was the county's. They were the sponsors for that. So to have that given to us, there might be some hoops to jump through.
Got you.
You know, again, that's one of those that, what's the most prudent thing to do there? If we can resurrect that grant paperwork, and so far, we haven't been able to find anything, and the county hasn't been able to find anything.
Right.
So, yeah, it's a good question, but I think the, the federal grant thing is a little sticky. We're, we're researching that.
That makes sense, yeah.
We are, since you did bring it up, though, we are, as you probably know, we are doing some work over there.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Working with Kimberly, we've gotten the drainage issues taken care of on the outside. Lewis came in and did some boring and such and got, got an outlet going there. So we're getting the runoff water from the buildings going into the right places, flooding the area. And we're, we're going to continue to do more. The LED lighting project, we'll be moving forward with the repairing and sealing and striping of the parking lot. We're working forward with that. And repair of the landscaping on the outside, eliminate some of the bushes and put in just the general landscaping.
And just so you know, the center itself, using their own funds, they're going to repaint in the hallways and do some, just some sprucing up of the interior. They're, they're just doing that.
Well, the price of materials today, they could mortgage a place to buy a gallon of paint. My gosh.
Oh, no.
It's 50 bucks. And, yeah, so thank, thank them for that. That's, that's good stuff. We had Doug over here a few weeks ago and sat down, talked about all this, and then created a punch list. And we're going to do what we can do to get things. I mean, that's a, that's a resource and an asset. Whether part of it's county owned or part of it's city owned, we just need to protect it. Okay. Any other questions on that memorandum of understanding? Probably not, to you guys digest it a little bit. Okay. Andy, Shot, you want to give us a police report?
Yeah. For the month of February, there were 26 accidents, 23 total warnings issued, 46 offenses, 29 case reports, 462 calls for service, 22 lockouts, five tow vehicles and nine people incarcerated. And then you have the list of crimes that those people were lodged for. Other than that, I'm sure most of you know, we lost two officers to Logan's Ford. Officers Andy and McIntyre, they both have gone to Logan's Ford. They both live there. Their last day was March 13th, so they're off the schedule now. We had three applications turned in. We've got testing Saturday. We did hire Gerardo's come back. He left two years ago, three years ago now, maybe?
Three years ago now, yeah.
And went to Florida. I've talked to him ever since he left. I know he's been wanting to come back, kind of, if he finally tosses life into it. I'm not sure how happy she is about it, but they're coming back. It looks like his start date is going to be April 18th, so that'll be good. We've still got two that need to go to the academy. Brady Briggs goes to the academy in May. And then Bryce Michael will go in August. And then we've got testing for the final position this Saturday for the three that turned in applications. We'll see how it goes. Yeah, that's about it.
Dispatcher.
Yeah, we did hire a new dispatcher. We've got one retiring, Dinah Gillon. She's been here longer than I have, 25 plus years. She's retiring in April, so we hired her replacement, Catherine Dively from the Fulton area. So she started Monday, trying to get her train so there's not much, not much downtime when Dinah leaves from the time she can start, so. That's all I got to think of, unless you can think of anything else?
I don't, I don't can. We're not, we're not in any desperate straits. We're down one officer, and we've got some rookies, right?
Yes, we've got some rookies. We're down an officer. One's out injured, but he'll be back next Tuesday, so, yeah.
Yeah. The good news is we have more senior folks than we have rookies, so there's some nice mentors around here. And Ostrom will make a nice mentor. He's a very seasoned officer.
Yes.
I'm really glad seeing him come here. I hated seeing leave.
I did, too.
But, you know, things come up in life, and sometimes you gotta, what is it they say, Todd? Life is nothing but day-to-day choices. Sometimes you have to retract.
I think it goes happy wife, happy life.
Okay, that's, that's the one I was looking for. Okay, okay. But, yeah, we're happy to have him back. Any questions for the chief? Okay. Dwayne and Randy both had other obligations tonight, so I thought, you know, I promised to go through some of the projects. I've already talked about a couple of them, the waste treatment plant project, the biggest thing we had on board, seven and a half million dollar project, which we're gap charting to be completed by the end of September, middle of October. And we're meeting monthly, well, every other week, I should say. So twice, twice a month for construction meetings in here. Next one's the 31st, and we get a full report of how it's all going. There's nine phases involved in completing it out there. And just talking to Marcus yesterday about when we get it completed, we want to have everybody come out and take a, take a tour. Just, just for this group's information, the, the seven and a half million dollar loan that we took out with the state, state revolving fund, the leachant program that I was talking about, that you questioned me about, we took in half a million dollars last year, which our first year of processing. We're forecasting about a million dollars this year, and it continues to run, run about that level, 10 to 12 million gallons a year being processed. That money exclusively pays the loan. We don't have to raise any of the utility rates or anything to cover anything being done. That's taking care of our payment there, so that's been a, a good thing. The, the other, we've got a couple other projects that we're using ARPA funds for. Couple of smaller projects are, we've defined a couple of water mains. One in Fox Run, which is west of town, and the other one out Deer Run, which is the east town, east of town. But they were the end-of-the-line mains, and this is going back four years. We're not looped, so we can get a better performance and better pressure and less brown water and such if we loop those two lines. So we've got, we've got about 400,000 of the ARPA funds, which you guys allowed us to use for these types of things, committed to that, leaving about a million for our Main Street project, the downtown project, where we will continue with what NDOT left off and, you know, go from 8th Street or 9th Street all the way out to 2nd Street. The process is going to be in two phases, and we were just going over it yesterday and discussing the issues that we'd have to face, the biggest one being the car show in October. Construction will start around July, and we will, we'll put, we'll be putting the bids together and such, and it will start on the north side and head this way. And we told the, the car show folks that you can count on coming down and utilizing 5th Street like you have in the past. Last year, I think they encroached and went a little farther. This year, they will, they will stop at 5th Street because that's where the construction will, will meet them. That will be in the, this first year, this year. The first quarter, then of next year, the start will be for the rest of it, to finish it. And when that's done, boy, we'll have storm sewers that are, they're just great. And the street will be in good shape and such.
So it's going 5th to?
Well, it's going 2nd.
Going from 2nd down to 5th, first base?
Yeah, yeah, first base. That does a couple things for us. It allows us some flexibility in handling the downtown situation. And about May, we're going to bring the merchants into a meeting and the business owners downtown into a meeting with our charts and pictures and everything, engineering plan, and go through it with everybody. So everybody on Main Street will know exactly what, what we're facing and what we're looking for as far as traffic control. We don't know, the chief will be involved. We're going to be looking at the one-way streets. We're going to be looking at all sorts of things to see how to best handle traffic and not disrupt our downtown very much. So it's kind of a balancing act, but we've got some very good people working with it.
Great when it's done.
Yeah, great when it's done. You know, as a downtown investor, you kind of hate to see water coming up over the curb running towards your door. Don't really like that. And so we're going to, we're going to rectify that. I don't know if you've been past First Federal lately, but they don't seem to flood down there anymore. We got that pretty well knocked in the, in the head.
Yeah, really is.
That is kind of a Reader's Digest version of some of the projects we are just deeply into right now. The others are all laid out and scheduled to come after these. We can only take so many bites of the elephant at a time. One of them that's going to be a, a big one that we've got about two years, the engineers tell us to, to put together and formulate, is the pool. The pool is in heavy, heavy, heavy disrepair, or well, it's not disrepair, age, age. And so we'll be, we'll be rolling with that one down the road. But that, that's going to be a big number, too, and we'll be looking for grant monies and such to help with that. But, you know, all involved, believe that's a very, very important resource and asset for our communities, and we're going to do everything we can. We get it all done in a couple of years. It, it will be a pool. It will be a water place. It may not look, well, for sure, won't look exactly like it does today because what we've got today was 1960, you know? It'll be, it'll be different, but it'll be fun. It'll be good. So that, that's, that's just kind of a rundown of some of the things we're into. And I would invite you folks, if you're down this way, anytime other than a meeting, stop by, we'll take you in the project room, go through 16 of them with you. Yeah, it is funny, we established this room, okay? We got all on the whiteboard. We got, and what we do is we have these meetings, these construction meetings and these planning meetings, and then we update the whiteboard, so anybody can go in at any time and look at project number five. Okay, that's the water line. Okay, Fox Run, here's what's going on, whatever. If it's blocks of grant, here's what's going on with the grant. It's all, it's all right there in one view. Well, I came in one day. This is the humor of the folks I work with. I blame her. I think she's an instigator. And in the middle of the conference table was a bat phone. Not hooked up, but it's a bat phone.
What symbol does that shoot up into the sky?
I don't know. I don't know. But all I know is, this is what really irks me. Shot keeps calling me Robin. Oh, shoot. So that, that's, that's what's going on. Going down the reports of the committees, looking at a couple of things there. Under the redevelopment commission, you got Brett Kernet listed there. Brett is now the president of the Redevelopment Commission. And those of you who've met Brett, he's the CFO out at, out at Shepherd's Car Dealership, the GM dealership, very, very sharp fellow. He was the interim mayor for a time for Tipton and is from that area. Is now relocated to the lake, lives here in Rochester, and wanted to be actively involved in our economic development process. He's been a really, really good find, and so we're, we're working and doing some, doing different things going forward there. Marty, do you want to talk about the BCA and the Council on Aging?
I will, be very brief. I was unable to attend Council on Aging yesterday, and I don't have a copy of those minutes yet. BCA is tomorrow night, and Heather's more apt to know this, but I guess one thing on the agenda, I think it's going to be a fairly short meeting, fairly small. It's about signage, so.
For Columbia School?
That's my report.
I have a question for her, since she brought that up, the BCA meeting tomorrow night. One of your BCA members is being considered for the commissioner's position tonight.
One of our county BCA's.
Yeah. That would.
We'd lose him if you got it.
I see. Yeah, yeah, that's what I figured. Yeah, okay.
I have a question real quick, though. Is the Redevelopment Commission tomorrow morning?
I don't think so. I think it's next week.
Next week.
Yeah. The 30th at 8:30.
Okay.
Don't do that shot. It does that to me a lot.
Well, I have it on my calendar for tomorrow, but now that I thought about it so, because I was going to be here tomorrow, but I won't be able to make it on the 30th now because I have a seminar at 9:00.
Okay. Where's your seminar?
It's on Zoom, but.
Oh.
It's in the office, but it's from 9:00 to 12:30. But I did have it on the calendar for tomorrow, that's why I asked.
Would you have, seriously, would you have time to stop in at 8:30 and introduce yourself?
Yeah, I just won't be able to get into discussion.
No. No, that's, that's fine.
I did want to talk to him about a few things. I won't have time that morning.
Okay, yeah. I, I think they'd like, some, some of them don't know who you are, and I think they'd like to meet.
And he's here.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Todd, your report on solid waste and animal adoption.
Sure. The animal adoption group did not meet this month. They'll be meeting next month. Solid Waste Group did meet. And they shipped out 116 tons of recyclables at a value of $15,222. Month of December, the County Line landfill received 40,962 tons of waste. 14% of that was from Fulton County. And in January, the landfill received 33,036 tons. 18% of that was from Fulton County.
And did they, did they report any is from out of state?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me check here. There was 15, 16 tons out of state in December and 13 tons out of state in January. So it's a fairly small amount. Considering the total was almost 41,000 tons and 33,000 tons. Okay. County host fee that we received from December was $17,601 and $13,546 in January. They were able to purchase a new skid loader with funds that they had saved and are looking now at fixing up the active trailer site. And that was the end.
Any questions?
You may not know the answer to this topic. At any given time, are there a number of puppies at the, at the animal shelter?
There often are. Yeah. I don't know if you would find one every single day because usually the puppies go fairly quickly. But they do have often, yeah.
You looking for a puppy?
No.
Oh, okay, okay.
But I have a family member.
Those of you out there, don't, don't throw puppies off.
I do have a family member that might be.
You could just call before you go out there and ask what's available. I haven't been out there recently, so I'm not sure what they have right now. But yeah, I'm sure they could give you a rundown if you want to call.
What's your address? Yeah, I know.
I should have asked after the.
You should have, yeah. Okay. Anything else for Todd? Brian, for Todd?
How about Fedco? At Fedco, Matt, March 11th. We, Fedco closed on the two lots that I reported last month. Those were sold. Oh, great, now it's a meeting.
We'll call it a meeting after you give your report.
Tiffany did speak to another business that's possibly interested in purchasing another lot there at Blackadder. There's been some difficulty.
Who has purchased the two lots?
Yeah, I don't remember the name. I don't remember who it.
Dan Holtz.
Dan Holtz.
Dan Holtz.
Was he Detroit?
Detroit?
No.
Oh.
No. Okay.
No. I'm not sure who it is.
He's from the Elkhart area.
Thank you.
Gillian, are you, are you privy to say for what purpose?
If I was privy to that, I wouldn't know.
You wouldn't know? So it's just Dan Holtz from the Elkhart area?
I don't, I don't remember what the.
Okay, there's been a little difficulty communicating with NIPSCO regarding the gas line on the property. Typically, they want to work with the, the property owners, but we're trying to assist and get that worked out. Ted Wagner reported that the loan agreement with RMC was good to go. Trust, he worked that out with, because Andy, you asked me about that question. That's all worked out. The organizational, organizational assessment, a lot of you guys may have already seen an invite for stakeholders. There are going to be meetings from April 7th to 12th at the Learning Center. And that's just to get feedback from the stakeholders and, you know, some things they might want to see, directions to go. The first pitch competition will be held at the Rochester High School on the 31st, and it will be open to the public. The next level business class will begin in April. We received the AHEC annual report at this meeting. Fedco's currently working with Rich Investments and meeting about their T-Mobile grant on the 11th, met with them. And we did approve the BNB manufacturing tax abatement. And this news is a little outdated because I'm sure you, everyone saw this spread in the paper, but Rick Figlio presented a letter from the Board of Works about a potential buyer for the old jail. It was discussed, Brian Lewis is going to reach out to the individual to follow up about their last meeting. And that was it.
I'm just curious, anybody been over to, talk to the BNB folks and see how they're doing?
What was the question?
The, BNB folks?
What's the question?
Has anybody reached out to them and?
Yep, yep, they've hired their general manager and now they're looking for their CNC operators.
Okay. Anything for?
They are hiring.
They are hiring, yes, they are. Against signs being held up in a lot of places. Okay. No questions for Councilman Goodman. I will call our regular meeting to order since we have a quorum. And we have one piece of business to attend to since we now have a quorum. It's the American Axel Personal Property Tax Abatement Renewal.
Was anyone going to be here?
Don't suppose to be, don't think so. I want to read what he's got there.
Is this the renewal? Carolyn, you know what year this is in this?
Nope. It simply was handed to me. I don't know anything about it.
I don't remember what year this is.
Didn't see it on the front.
Yeah, when I looked at it, I couldn't, I couldn't come up with it.
About halfway through the abatement.
Yeah, I think, did we do, did we do a seven or 10?
I believe.
The numbers look good for sure.
Yeah, the estimated on SB 1, 45 employees, actually 42. Salaries are down.
It does say estimated completion date of 1/31/23.
Is this the? Okay, it could be a seven-year period. Or was it for, did you see that? Yeah. Yeah, this was a, this was a five-year abatement with the machinery, equipment, tooling and such. So they've got one more year.
Well, they have overperformed in number of employees and the addition of this machinery.
Brian Simpson, their tax director, says the return does not reflect any abated assets due to the project not being completed yet. So, yeah, they've got another, we approve it, they've got another year after this. The numbers do look appropriate. They're, they're, they're completing what they said they were not completing. Do we need a motion, Brian?
If you're looking for a motion, move to approve.
Councilman Smith moves to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Wilson. Those in favor of approving the abatement for another year? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Attorney Perkins, do you have anything tonight?
No, I think you touched on a couple of things that we've been working on.
That you were, okay.
Mayor, Brian, I don't have a value to report.
Are you, are you, are you at liberty to report on where you were and what the outcome was?
As far as I know.
Okay. Okay, you didn't, you didn't take any blood oath or anything. Okay.
I can't say.
How, how did it turn out?
It was fine. We had the caucus replace Steve Vescor and Dave Summers. It was chosen to, to replace him. Get sworn in tomorrow morning and move forward.
Okay, all right.
And we, do you want to do a tree board or?
Oh, yeah, go ahead and do this.
Tree board, Matt. Buford's Tree Company came, two representatives came, induced themselves. They're getting to the process to submit bids for tree removals and everything else. Seem like two nice guys. Hopefully we'll see how they do. Tree, they're working on the Arbor Day. What are we going to do for Arbor Day this year? Past two years, they said, well, you guys don't have to do anything because of COVID. Just submit your reports, you've been nice. They're going back to, you must do the plan again. We've been doing it for past 23, 24 years, so.
Yeah, I always, I've always done Arbor Day proclamation.
Right, but I'm saying they're, they're getting back to the, you must do these things now.
I see.
So at some point, though, we'll figure what that is, get proclamation done and get it forward. Getting, starting to get grabbed up on the, you know, being able to do tree trimmings again. And we're going to work with the street departments, better coordinate with the tree inventories. The street department says, if you take a tree down, let us know. That way we can take off the inventory, new things get planted. Not so much as their job to do it, but just to report, communication between the, the groups departments. And hopefully, once the weather gets nicer, we'll be planting more trees. And keep the, the requirements for the tree setting. And that's all I know.
Okay. Any questions for Brian? Okay, one other piece of business, so we can do some signatures here. Anybody have any corrections or additions to the minutes from the last meeting? If not, I entertain a motion to accept the minutes. Motion by?
Second.
Wilson, seconded by Fitzwater. Those in favor, four of you. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay.
Adjourn, thank you.
I let that call run.
Probably wise.
Do second that for the.
Well, I wanted you all to read it.
Did you do the first one, too? Second the first one?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yes, sure.
Okay.